Special meeting to order. It is 5:40 PM, March 25th, 2025. At this time, I'm going to ask Dr. Evans if he would give us the invocation, please.
Thank you so much for the honor of that. No, no, it is Tidawah. Lord, Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and just the warmth and sunshine, seeing the nature around as things turning green and the renewal of spring. Thank you for the blessings that are all around us. Help us to always to do the best that we can to be the strongest people we can be. Help us to make good decisions. Help us to always struggle to do that little bit better each day. Forgive us when we fall short and help us to remember those who are out in the world away from us here and help them to remember us and for us all to feel as family and to support each other. Jesus' name, amen.
All right, thank you for that, Dr. Evans. At this time, we'll go to roll call.
Misty Nuno?
Here.
Jordan Canuho?
Here.
George Gardapi here. Carol Chapman?
Cynthia Butler?
Here.
Donna Hare?
Titikku.
Jean Evans?
Here.
Sammy Kimble?
Here.
Right, item number three, we have approval of the agenda. Are any revisions, additions, deletions? Hearing none, I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
A motion to approve?
I'll make, I'll second.
That a motion by Vice President Canuho, second Vice Secretary Gardapi? Let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Gardapi, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimble?
Yes.
Item number four, approval of minutes. Approval of the Pawnee Business Council Special Meeting Minutes for March 4th, 2025.
Madam President, I had a chance to review the minutes, had some comments on the ones that were sent. I believe those got picked up, so I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for March 24th.
Oh, I'll second, but I have additional revisions.
The motion on the floor by Vice President Canuho, second by Councilwoman Butler. Let's go into discussion. Councilwoman Butler?
On line 14, to add Madam President. On line 165, just adding the word "it" so that the sentence now "it" is up too. And then on line 189, it says "executive session" instead of "executive session", so I was changing the C to a V.
What was the second line number?
Line 165.
Any other revisions, revisions? If not, Vice President, would you like to amend your motion with changes, to include with changes?
Yes, I amend it with changes.
Vice Presi-, I mean, Councilwoman Butler, do you agree?
Yes.
Okay, let's call for the vote.
Jordan Canuho?
Yes.
George Gardapi, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimble?
Yes.
Right. Item number five, Pawnee Business Council Travel Report and Request.
Madam President?
Yes, Vice President?
I do have a report to give, and this is regarding travel this past month to the 2025 Tribal Summit. That was held at OSU. And this was Thursday, March 6th, 2025, OSU West Watkins Center in Stillwater, Oklahoma. I attended that summit along with, as, along with you, Madam President, and also with Councilwoman Hare. I was able to attend the breakout sessions that were there. There were different tracks offered from the breakout sessions. The track that I chose to go for was Track One, which was Workforce Development. And so from 1 o'clock to, I believe it was about 1:45, we had our first meeting with that, and it was recruitment partnering for tribal communities. And then at 2, we had another session with the breakout, which was assessing talent for future employees and tribes. And then we had our final one at 3, which was Human Resources Best Practices. It was pretty interesting. I've, yeah, I chose that track just because of just how, you know, things, you know, continue to move along in government for us. And there was a lot of good information, a lot of good individuals on the panels to provide information. The first track, they, one of the panels offered a summary of the 2024 companies from 20 employees to 5,000, just kind of did a survey on certain areas. That was kind of just asked questions as far as, like, for example, some areas that potential employees are looking for is flexibility and working, such as remote, hybrid, flex schedule, those sorts of things. And so it was interesting tracks that I was able to attend on that one. A lot of different statistics that they offered as well for that. So that's, that's pretty much all I had for that, that report there.
Thank you, Vice President. Councilwoman Hare?
Yes, I have a trip report. I did, I was at the Tribal Summit, but I wasn't representing Pawnee Nation. I was representing the Center of Sovereign Nations at OSU. And so, but I attended the same sessions that Jordan did. And so, and found them interesting, because I know that we have a lot of interest in, you know, HR development right now. So I went to the United Indian Nations of Oklahoma meeting last week, and there were 31 of 38 recognized tribes there. And so it's really building back up. They're really looking for probably more tribes to join. So the message was for we need to stick together, that we need to be on offense and defense. We need to defend our history. Don't let them whitewash it. Let's see, Chief Barnes with the Shawnee start, said that they're starting to identify the most threatened grants. Language was one, and I think that they, some of the tribes expressed that they're, they got multi-year language program, but they only, they were funded one year, and they've been notified they're not going to be funded any further. So the Comanches are getting ready for the fight financially. They're branching off from gaming and shifting to other industries. The entire climate creates anxiety, and we need to assure them, our tribal members, and keep them calm. And the tribes in the Southwest are meeting every few weeks. So the United Indian Nations of Oklahoma, they're starting to set up meetings between, with the nine tribes up in the Northeast area and the eight tribes down in the Anadarko area. And so I checked with President Nuttall to see if we could get them to help us, you know, facilitate a meeting, have us have meetings here with our five tribes. And so we'll, we'll be getting into contact with UNO on that. And let's see, Chief Hoskins, he said that this fast change is difficult. That land title reformed that was achieved under Trump I needs to continue. And he talked about on defense that we need to educate the new crop of appointees. With HHS Tribal Advisory, he spoke with Secretary Kennedy, and it's a unique place for Native nations. The strategy is the same as a new president. For this, as, for the president is to educate them. Look at achievements, Indian country reminded, they need to be reminded, tribes are sovereign. They talked about the Burgum memo with HUD. And it, and it said, "It just doesn't happen. We have to get out there, be vigilant, meet with administration and Congress." And there should be a tax bill for Indian country, housing tax credit, tribal economies. Pay attention to the direction the country is going. Protect 8A status for tribes. We need to send Margot a tribal seal for the resolutions. They're going to put all of our tribal seals on the UNO resolutions. And for offense, we need to lean into the policies. Chief Barnes said that CDFI needs to be protected. 8A has problems and need to be reformed, and we need to find allies in Doge. And let's see. They talked about the importance of Taro, and it needs to be strengthened, and it must have value for people. The use of termination is important. The NPR reporter for OSU was there, Herrera, and, and she was covering it. Let's see. Pipe Stemois went over that they worry about the Culture Center, about the graduation ceremonies for Native students. The Department of Education. They're investigating 45 institutions and seven, seven more institutions for race-based scholarships. So they're wanting to prohibit creation of a hostile environment. And the 10th Circuit ruling on the, this fund, there's a, I think it's, I don't know the exact name of it, it's for Black Women Business Coalition in Georgia. They talked about it violating Section 19. Oh, I'm sorry, didn't do that. But DOE, they said they stepped up enforcement. The strategy is to be supportive of the programs, make them aware that, you know, we're watching what's going on. Let's see, it was, it was a really good meeting. There, there were a lot of panels. There was discussion on Executive Order 14191, and it tried to direct the secretary to develop a plan to use school choice for funding for BIE. And it's 7,000 a student. So they're, they tried to do a previous school choice in 2016 on the voucher, but that, that didn't pass. And it means that the money would go to, yeah, the money that would go to the school would go to the family, and they would decide where to, where to go. But they're seeking input on the executive order, and that, yeah, that's passed. There's a lot of concerns about the BIE schools and the funding. Just go through the last panel here on the. And they talked, with best practices, hardly any grant, they said hardly any grants are coming out, so don't wait until the last minute. Get your, you know, get your proposals in as soon as you can. And get it, and it gives, yeah, to that. Get drawdowns completed as fast as you can, and we've been on that. The director of IHS said there was no official nomination, but there's two Oklahoma applicants.
Did they say who they are?
I think one might be Kevin Watts. And, and possibly maybe Seneca Smith? Uh huh. And there's a Beverly Cotton, and so I'm not sure if she's one or not. So the language grants are on hold. One of the requests the tribal leader made is please ask the federal government to please notify us when you're going to put a program under review, because it cuts off their funds. And, yeah, they talked about, there was a lot of discussion on the, our, yeah, on the Lumbees, and them gaining recognition, federal recognition, because they're not going through the process, the regular process. There's 55,000 members, and they'll be put on the already overburdened IATJ system. And then they talked too, again, about the, those groups out there that are posing as tribes. And, and they're really worried about them trying to get recognition and get federal, get federal funding. So they said, "Hold Kennedy to his word about the funding, you know, about protecting IHS funding. Send letters and call. We need IHS." Scott Davis, he is the principal deputy assistant of the Interior, and he attended virtually instead of Secretary Bergen. And he actually served, North Dakota has a tribe, a tribal secretary on their cabinet. And there's another northern state that does too. So he served on the secretary's cabinet for North Dakota. I forgot what tribe he was, but I don't know if y'all know Ken Bilmar? He's working in that office. He was-
You're saying secretaries on the cabinets on, are you talking about like the, served on like stack? Or what, or on a specific committee?
He didn't really say. He just served, he, he said, Mr. Scott Davis said that he served on, on the, dang it, I'm sorry, I went blank.
Oh, you're, you're fine.
Yeah, not the committee. What was the other one you said? The cabinet, the cabinet, yeah, yeah. That he served, that he served on the cabinet. So a lot of tribes thought that that was interesting, that we should have that in Oklahoma, that we should have a native person serving there. They talked about how important law enforcement is, and land into trust and gaming. And, and he talked, he said he would, he would come out and visit, and he wants to come out and visit all the tribes, and wants their staff to attend meetings when they're invited. So she, Deborah Dodson with the Quapaw said that they had 3.8 million pooled from their, their funds last week. And that's who, the one who's grant funds, and that's the one who's asking for notice, you know, when they're under review. And they're also talking about trying to get a exemption, exemption for Department of Interior like they did for Indian Health Service. And the, that's what, or that's what she said, "Can we do that?" And the answer was that they're working on the exemption. Kim Tehe was there, and you probably all know she is, she is the person that has been delegated to serve in Congress because of the treaty, of the new Ochota Treaty with the Cherokees. But that has, she's ready, but the United States government hasn't honored that yet. And, but they're still, Shurkey Nation has been pushing for it. And she said, let's see, to keep the White House Counsel in place. And that it was established under Trump's first administration, and so she would like to see it kept in place. And Cole has been, has sent a letter to OMB describing the unique status, you know, of tribes. Is trying to, so the, and the BIA said they're trying to make it more user-friendly and have more engagements on, on the issues. So it was, the meeting was long, it went all day, and it was a full, a full house on it. So anyway, it was, it was good. They're going to, they'll be meeting again quarterly, and then they'll also be, you know, sending out information.
All right, one final question. You said Deborah Dodson, they had 3.8 million of their funding pooled, rescinded, whatever you want to say.
Their grant funds.
Which grant? Or what program?
They didn't, I don't, I didn't have it written down. I don't really know if she said. But it, it might be language. That's the ones that, and I don't, I don't know if they do that much. That's the one there is a lot of concern about, is a lot, the language grants were getting pooled. And they, that's one thing they wanted to, to, to make sure is that we're not DEI. You know, there's trust responsibilities and government, political relationship with the United States government.
A and A is under what?
SBA, isn't it? 8A, government contracting.
No. No, A- A, or the-
Oh, A- A.
Administration for Native Affairs.
It's HHS, isn't it?
I thought it was like, what is it, EFCS?
Oh, A- A, yeah, children and families. Yeah, it's that one, yeah.
You see that?
Yeah.
Is that, yeah, that's just kind of concerning because it was, I don't know if that was a result of a review, like they're doing a review, or why did they pull the funding? I don't know.
Yeah.
And Deborah Dodson is-
Yeah, it's Deborah Dodson.
What tribe?
Quapaw. Wait, is Quapaw, that's why I have a cue by her, so, yeah.
I'll have to reach out to her.
And I'll check, and I'll check, make sure, but I'm pretty sure it is.
Any questions for Councilwoman here?
I have a question.
Yes.
Can you hear me? Is the speaker working? I'm just worried and concerned about our discussions that we had with the potential closure of the Bureau of Indian Affairs here at Pawnee Agency. And the last meeting that we had, I thought that President Nettle and you were going to be working to, to bring in those, the five tribes, Quanqas, Quanqas, Otos, and us, to a table, so that we can have discussions, and I'd like to know where we're at with that. Thank you.
Yeah. This is something that maybe, because it's not on the agenda, but I wanted to kind of expand on that in open forum with, with the BIA, because yes, we did have meetings with Jeremy and his staff that came over, and they had actually came to try to discuss, you know, as we had stated, we were needing to know what type of, or what type of square footage needs they had, so we could see if we had anything to help accommodate them through this process. We just learned today that GSA actually came and did a visit, and per GSA, the agency is not on their, is currently not on their removal list. So they haven't been, been notified from Doge, I guess I'm assuming. I don't know who's going to officially notify GSA to cancel the leases, but we pulled the lease to try to find out the timeline as to when they need to notify us, and so they're still within the parameters of the contract. So we can hold them accountable that, with that aspect.
Thank you. I just thought it was part of the committee report, that's why I asked now.
Oh.
We can pause if you want to. Thank you.
Well, let me finish my thought here. So with that being said, I think that's kind of the, the holdup. I know that he had requested, you know, that we submit like a draft letter, and he would help us, you know, try to make sure that what, the points that we're trying to make are on point with what is actually happening with the Bureau. So we are continuing to work with Superintendent Lovecamp at the Pawnee Agency to try to see what we can do to assist in keeping the Pawnee Agency at Pawnee and not having them relocate to somewhere else. Per, per Mr. Lovecamp, the thought is perhaps that they may be potentially even moving to Shawnee. So, you know, that, that is going to be a really heavy burden on our tribal members to travel from here, you know, down to Shawnee to try to get any type of business done, so it's really beneficial for us to write that letter and advocate for them to keep the lease, to stay here in, in the area where they can serve the tribes that are within this jurisdiction. So that being said, yes, that was related to Jeremy as well, that we will reach out to the five tribes. I did inform him that the Shalaco Alumni Association has also reached out to us because they're wanting to get some kind of groundskeeping, groundskeeping and maintenance schedule as well. So those are a couple of items that we're looking forward to reaching out to the tribes and seeing how they want to pursue, pursue these initiatives. Anyone else for committee report?
I have a committee report.
Which one?
Margot Beishard. Okay. Yes, we had a tourism committee meeting, and so I just wanted to report on what was going on there. I did report a couple of months ago about the sign at the museum. We are getting that replaced. During the storm, some of the letters came off, so it's missing some of those letters, so we're going to be putting up the Pawnee Nation seal within the next couple of weeks, and then we're going to get the, the lettering replaced by, by the vendor. So hopefully that's going to happen within the next three weeks.
Are you giving your committee reports?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we're not there yet.
Oh, you just said committee reports.
Oh, I think it-
Yeah.
Well, we're doing, we're still on travel report.
Okay, well, you want me to finish my committee report and go back to travel?
Go ahead and finish my committee report.
I just got one more thing to mention.
Okay.
Okay, and then we've been working really hard on a webpage, on the Pawnee Nation website, and we now have a web link to Pawnee Nation Tourism. So we have, we're, we're, put the museum out there, they actually have a page now where you can go and look at information, contact information, we did an attractions page with that. We'll let you know what all Pawnee Nation has out here on campus, which includes the horseshoe pits, it includes the disc golf, the campgrounds, other little sites, and then we're also working, we're still working on it, it's still, we're adding things, we're going to be doing historical landmarks or markers, and we have a couple that are already up there, but it'll be, give everybody an idea of what you can visit, what's Pawnee. I think we're going to be adding some landmarks up in Nebraska as well. We've been working with CRD to really get this done, to, and use their expertise. We have some exhibits that are coming up that we'll be pushing out there as well on these pages. So it's really exciting to see the, this kind of come to fruition, because we haven't had any exposure for our museum, any exposure for any of really the, the things that we have going on out here, and people utilize, don't even know that some of like the disc golf stuff is out there, or that anybody can come and use the park, and it's got rules up there and all this other stuff. So we're really working with Dina and Communications to get this done, and the Tourism Committee has been helping do this, and, and it's, it's great. Just go, if you want to go look at it, it's Pawnee Nation Tourism, and it should be up there, a link on the top of the menu. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Treasurer Chapman, was yours under committee report?
It's in here, it says.
Or trip report?
I just wanted to report, I didn't make the trip.
On the, the one trip I was supposed to, to OSU, I was unable to make that trip. But while we're still on that, is this where our request goes in right here? I would like to request to attend the Oklahoma Tribal Finance Consortium meeting in Shawnee on April thirteenth, what, fourteenth, fifteenth, and sixteenth. They have excellent presentations on the latest, I'm sure, pertaining to the, all of the funding efforts that are coming down, or dis- efforts or whatever. So I just wanted to request to go to that one.
Okay. Any other travel reports?
I just have a correction to make.
Yes.
Deborah Dodson is with the Delaware Nation.
Thank you for that. Okay, my trip reports. Well, I'm just going to go over my whole calendar, because I don't know what was on the trip, and some of them were just online. Starting with the tribal leaders, some of that was held at OSU, trying to not be redundant. I attended the economic development tracks that were had, the panel members that they selected, and also to add that this tribal leaders' health summit was held in conjunction with the gaming, what was it, how did they term it? It was with the Oklahoma Indian Gaming Association. So you also had tribal leaders there, and a lot of the panels focused on not only economic development within the tribal industry, but also within game, the gaming industry. So that being said, the first one that I attended was the strategic planning and policy development. And what the panels did is they sat there and they had a moderator, the moderator asked the questions to initiate the discussion, and then it was basically a Q and A with the audience members. They talked about the challenges that they had in pursuing their travel projects, gave us insight, let me just tell you, the other ones I had was economic development, success in projects, and then enterprise finance and capital assistance. So within all of those panels, there were tribal, tribal representation from the Potawatomi's, from the Tonkawas. You know, if you're not familiar, they're building the hub in Stillwater, but he also relayed or expressed the challenges that he had with his first project that he had in coming onboard as a new leader, and, you know, voiced his concerns that, you know, everybody needs to be educated on the project going in, you know, it wasn't, he, he said it wasn't a fail, I mean, it wasn't a success, it was a failure, but those are the times, those are the kind of things that you learn from, you reevaluate, get back up, and, and find out where your weaknesses are in doing your projects and continue to move forward. I mean, if everybody, you know, failed and just sat there, sat there on their hands, then there would, you know, be no success. So he continued to encourage tribal leaders. There were also students that joined the sessions, so they were in their, I don't know what classes they represent, but they had really good questions, probably coming from their vis, business classes, where they asked more specific information related to like banking. They talked about the types of banking, of course, CDFIs, and how they got their banks off the ground, you know, tribal run banks, such as Sovereign Bank. A couple of their representatives from the bank were also in the classes, so they were able to, you know, give a shout out to them, draw from their experiences, thank them for their support, because without the support of the lenders, then a lot of these projects couldn't, couldn't happen, or wouldn't be successful. They gave out tips for going through the process, the types of documentation you need, what you need to look for as a tribe going into the banking industry, the type of field that you're going into, you know, to be knowledge of, of the regulations that govern the programs, and just those types of things, because when you go there, they may not have the knowledge as well. So you having that knowledge, you're, you're able to educate them and comfort them on their, you know, desire to approve you or, or seek you as a partner. That was one of the things that they had discussed too, was having your lenders at the table to discuss your projects as you go along, because they also are familiar with the lending within the industry, and may be able to point you to other resources to fund your project, where you don't necessarily have to take on a lot of, a lot of lending and have a lot of capital to, you know, utilize as collateral, utilizing like the 104 loans, economic development, rural development loans. And if they didn't have the expertise, they were able to point you to somebody within their institution to, you know, like I said, educate you or point you in, in the right direction. So it really was a good opportunity to hear from these tribal leaders through their experiences, network with, with the banks, you know, we, we actually do have an account with Sovereign Bank, so we were able to discuss a couple of the projects that we have regarding collateralization and, you know, the new 105 L leasing that has become available to tribes, and how to go about that and utilizing to get the best rates. So there was a lot that, you know, can be said for just those Q and A sessions, it wasn't necessarily something that you went into to learn something new, it was just really broad, so, you know, questions, it wasn't limited to specific questions or a specific topic, so I, it was a good summit, and this was actually, I believe, was the third year, so it continues to improve and continues to grow. That was on the sixth, let me look at my calendar here. We've also met with, we continue to meet on the Behavioral Health, Behavioral Health Center. The tentative ribbon cutting date is May the fifth. We're, we're looking at the list to develop, or to send out invitations. There will be a flyer coming out, it will go on the nation's website, and it looks to be on, in between the court and actual facility is where the setup will be, but like I said, more information is forthcoming, so a lot of it is doing the logistics right now. They did have a walkthrough, and I don't want to, I don't want to misstate it, but they, they did have a walkthrough and completed the first phase of the certification. I know the policies and procedures were accepted, and then now it's with them opening the doors and then having to be operational for a certain period of time. So we are, we anticipated this whole process being six months, but it's kind of been a little bit fast-tracked with that approval process that we've just completed. So hopefully it's not going to take as long as the six months. Like I said, more information to come out on that as it, as it gets closer. I know that they also want to report on the artwork design contest that they had as well, but I'll leave that to them. And the next item, and, and those are calls that we have every, every week, every Friday, and I know Treasurer Chapman, you were on the last one, that's what he had mentioned. We've had, as we had mentioned earlier, with Councilwoman Kimball's, Kimball's question, we've had discussions with the BIA lease discussion, that this actually was an in-person meeting, we have been emailing back and forth, and like I said, just looking at ways to try to minimize the impacts that are being had with, with the presidential, with the actions of the presidential administration. So those dialogues will continue to go on. You know, quarterly meeting was on the twentieth. The Cedar Blessing was held on Friday, the twenty-first. Also, the Spring Dance that was held, the New Year's Dance for Pawnee Nation on Saturday. This was, the meal was provided by the nation in coordination with the Chiefs Council, and we also want to give a shout out to the cooks for conducting, you know, what, what they do. That's a lot, that's a big responsibility to be able to provide nourishment to our tribal members and the thoughts that they have, that the chiefs have in order to put that dance on. So we're very appreciative of that and glad that they allow us to have a little bit of heart, heart in it. Also that week, the eighteenth through the twentieth, I attended the crane migration that was sponsored by Heather Henderson, Heather Henderson, Heather Hinson, Heather Hinson at the Crane Trust Foundation, and that is, that was in Wood River, Nebraska. Very, very humbling experience to be out there on the Flat River, you know, along with where our ancestors were, and to be able to witness this annual event. You know, Heather is just, has just the biggest heart and the generosity that comes from her and with her love for the Pawnee people, and she continues to want to work with the Pawnee people every time, you know, she visits Nebraska and has something to do with the state capitol or the legislature. She's, you know, always wondering where's the Pawnee people at, you know, they should have a seat at the table in informing us of things that she comes into contact with. We were also able to visit her land that she has, which is a little bit adjacent to the Crane Trust, and she has a vision there, I don't want to share her vision, but she has a vision for that property as well, so we've discussed, you know, her maintaining dialogue with the nation, so we can continue to work with her to make her vision a reality, because like I said, she truly has a heart for the Pawnee people. The Pawnee Nation College also had representatives that attended, and Sunny Evans from the Agriculture Department attended. They are working to bring a group of youth back to the Crane Trust this summer in the month of June, I believe. So they're, they're working together, looking at logistics, seeing how everything's going to work, meals, housing, those types of things. And we also, you know, were represented by the chiefs, there were a couple of youth that attended, and there was also the international, I don't know what his exact title was, but he was representing the International Crane Migration Association, and so he goes all over the world. It was the Sandhill Cranes and the Whooping Cranes. Well, when we were out there the first night, in, in the heated blinds, because it got really cold that night, there was one Whooping Crane that came out onto the river, and we were told that we were very fortunate to see that, because there's less than six hundred Whooping Cranes in, that are still alive today. Every, every morning, they would go out and do surveys in the airplane, and- in the airplane and try to estimate the number of whooping cranes that are in the migration. And it was in excess of 700,000 this year. And that's, that's the most that has been seen. So, they really are doing a good job in their conservation efforts and trying to keep the land as non-developed as possible. So, they have a really good staff, really good hospitality for all of the tribal members that attend and, and the other guests that they had that were there. So, that was the 18th through the 20th. On the 20th, there was a Direct Service Tribes Advisory Committee call that was held from 3:00 to 4:00 p.m. And they discussed, they had a financial presentation from IHS. And we're talking about the budget, similar to what Councilwoman Hair had expressed. It also is time for the Direct Service Tribes Advisory Committee elections. And if you're not familiar, the Direct Service Tribes within IHS are the tribes that still receive their services from IHS directly. You haven't compacted your facility and you provide direct services. It's, it's, we're still under care, I guess you'd say, or services are still provided from the federal government. So, that had been postponed until the next meeting to discuss, you know, who's going to be up for elections. It's for the Chairperson, Vice Chair and Secretary Treasurer. Most notably, with the IHS Direct Service Budget Update, she said that the budget still has been funded the same amount as it is this year through 2026. However, there was a decrease within the Division of Sanitation Facilities. And actually, she noted or made note that there was, although there is a decrease, what had happened or what's, what's happened is that Congress appropriates money or earmarks money for special projects within the Division of Sanitation Facilities, Sanitation Facilities Construction. And they didn't approve any special projects this year. So, that's where the decrease was. Otherwise, the funding level remains the same. We are going through budget formulation with IHS currently. And I, I can't remember the dates that it's coming up for. It'll have a congressional hearing where they'll go and they'll, you know, try to defend our budget request. So, all of that has been sent to IHS, I believe, for review is where it's at now. They're getting with legal and then they'll report back to the tribes. And that's a part of the budget formulation, which, which I'm a part of, which comes out of Oklahoma City Area Office. So, that was the 20th. This week, tomorrow is the Oklahoma Indian, or Oklahoma Inter-Tribal Tax Alliance. And I have a budget request, or a budget, I have a travel request for this one. It is at the Coopal Nation. The agenda tomorrow is similar to what was had at UNO, I believe, is to follow up, they're going to follow up on updates that were had regarding the state legislative updates, the Oklahoma Policy Institute. I don't know who's going to be doing the federal updates. It hasn't, it hasn't been listed yet, it just still says to be announced. And then the panelists that they have, they usually have panelists that come on at the end and they provide updates, such as, well, not such as, specifically, the income tax update, the tribal tax issues, the tobacco compact update and the motor fuel compact. And they have, tomorrow on the panel is Valerie DeVall, Herschel Warham, Billy Shepherd, George Wright. And he's invited, so I'm, I'm not for sure, Philip Chin. But a lot of these, well, not a lot, but Valerie and Herschel are legal attorneys. And Herschel went from the legal attorney and now he's the lieutenant governor for the Cheyenne and Rapahe tribes. But they both, anytime OITA has some issues, they're very, very involved in commenting, putting out their, not recommendations, but you know, some kind of, giving the tribe some kind of direction as to, as to what to look for, what to prepare for. And then also now, since, you know, he does sit on the travel side, it brings, you know, to the forefront the issues that the tribes face when dealing with the legislative processes. And so, that being said, there's also open, open forum at the end to where, you know, you can discuss different issues within the tribal, any tribal, any type of tribal tax issues that we have. Now, that, yeah, but we're currently reviewing our General Reven Taxation Act. We have the red line version that was sent. All a couple of other revisions that are going about. We're looking forward to having our new executives start and come onboard. And so, with that, you know, with him coming onboard, we'll be able to hopefully tackle a lot of these things and streamline it where we can get the information out more readily. It's just a lot going on, you know, like Donna had mentioned in her report and the recommendations from UNO is, you know, to try to stay as, try to stay as informed as possible on what the issues are that are going on. I mean, there's always something every day that, you know, with the lawsuits, with the blocks that are being put in place and just trying to grasp, you know, what the actual, what the actual action is or trying, you know, trying to get a glimpse of how it affects Indian country. Because, you know, initially, if you're not sure how it affects Indian country, then how are you, how are you going to move forward in designing a plan to protect it? So, you know, we, we're just doing as much as we can to try to stay informed. There's a lot going on. I know next week also is the Public Tribal Health Conference. I know one of the meetings that I missed also was the CHAP Symposium that was held in Oklahoma City. And that was on the 12th, 13th and 14th. This was at the FAM Museum. And this was attended by myself, Brian Park and Tiffany Fritz. And I was on the panel discussing developing your program with cultural values in mind. So, what the symposium does is it brings everybody together, gives you updates on where we're at with the certification process with IHS. They are moving forward. Again, it, it continues to be unfunded by IHS, although it, it is a mandate, it's an unfunded mandate. So, of course, continuing to advocate for funding for the program. There's a lot of certification that's been going on out in the Northwest Portland area. That's where a lot of this initiated from, of course, coming from the originators in the Alaska area. Now, actually, there is a community college that is providing classes, certification classes. So, I have got that information to present to the college to see what can be done in the Oklahoma area. Because that's one of the big things is the cost of getting certified. A lot of them are going to Alaska to, to do their certification courses. And, and not only the travel or the hotel, the lodging, however you want to look at it with that aspect, but just going up there, the actual courses were really expensive. And so, having brought them to the lower 48 with the community college being able to provide the certification courses, it has brought the, the cost down a little bit to where it's more affordable for tribes who want to take advantage. But again, this goes back to being able to provide community health aids within our healthcare delivery area within the tribe and within our, within our community. I mean, it can be expanded, it's just up to the type of program we want to make. And then also looking at the behavioral health aides and the dental health therapists. So, there were sessions that were had, breakout sessions in each of those three areas. And also, you know, of course, talked about third-party billing for sustainability and the issues that they had. There were success stories. Tribes came and, and shared their success stories with having individuals who had a desire to want to serve people, were good at it and were identified, you know, by tribal leaders. They were asked to, or they were introduced and asked to go to this program. And they've thrived, they've thrived in it. So, there's, you know, it's been proven that it does work. It's just, you know, needs to be based on the needs. It also is limited, they're not full-service providers. They're just looking at bridging gaps in areas where there's not enough providers or services to be had for tribal members based on their needs. So, we have a lot of programs that would benefit. You know, you can name any one of our programs, including our Title VI program and having, you know, these providers go out and, you know, they stop by an elder's house and maybe they're not feeling well that day and they're able to go and do a blood pressure check or maybe check their blood sugar. I mean, just minimal things like that. And the, the actual care, you know, they would pass on or refer to the providers that we have, either IHS or let them know, you know, that they need to go onto the emergency room. But it, but it's, it's somebody that's local, it's somebody that, you know, they have a good relationship with and that, you know, they identify as one of them. And so, they're a little more inclined to seek out medical care or even continue to make their doctor's appointments. You know, a lot of us, a lot of them struggle to even go to the doctor. So, just knowing that somebody is looking out for them, being supportive and maybe following up. I know we need a, a lot of work in the area of case management. We get elders that come out of the hospital, they go home, everybody knows they've been in the hospital, but then what happens when they get home? Does anybody go out and check on them? Have they got their refills? Did they, you know, make their follow-up appointments? And a lot of us know, you know, coming out of the hospital, sometimes there's a case manager that does that for you, but not all the time. So, there's things like that, you know, that can be done to, like I said, bridge those gaps within our medical delivery system. And that's the whole initiative behind CHAP. And we do have a planning or an implementation grant that we're looking at, and that's what the surveys are about. Continue to fill out those surveys, it gives us valuable information and lets us know what direction we need to go to try to get the program implemented on a permanent level. So, the next travel request was for the Public Health Service Conference. Ms. Tiffany Fritz Nichols will be attending. And she will be speaking on the CHAP panel this time. This, this Public Health Service Conference, again, is for the, the providers and the program managers, program supervisors, directors. And it's in conjunction with a lot of the facilities that have gone 638 and had designed their own programs. So, it's not limited to like the structure of what Indian Health Service provides. Or it may even be a culmination of both. If the tribe hasn't fully taken over the whole facility, there may be a combination of programs. So, that's a lot of what this, this health conference is about. The next request is for the Self-Regimen Conference, and that's the 7th through the 10th. And that is where the Department of Interior and IHS converge to provide legislative updates, which, which really, we've been waiting to hear from the self-regimen side of it. We know that everybody has been scrambled, scrambling with regards to contracts that we've had, existing contracts, how is it going to impact our money? You know, we talked about doing, the importance of doing the, the drawdowns. You know, we were told initially on one program or one agency that, you know, they, they were going to shut it down, told us we had a deadline. It was already shut down by the time we got in there, but then, you know, it was opened back up and we were able to because the judge blocked the order. But as I say, it's not going to happen again. There's ways that these tribes have banded together, which is great. There's already been issues, not issues, but we call them like coalitions that have been working together to try to see how they can address as a group or a cohort to try to tackle these issues which are attacking our sovereignty. And that's what we look to do with the other tribes in our area. You know, a lot of them down south, there's little tribes. And as you know, you know, a lot of the little tribes don't have the same issues as the bigger tribes. So, it's important for us to, to attend these conferences, whether they're online, in person, just to try to have as much representation as we can to try to stay informed of what's going on. So, we know, we know and we have a voice, we have a presence. Because like I said, you know, one, one tribe's issue may not be our own. So, that's why I say, you know, be vigilant in what's coming out, try to stay informed as much as possible. And, you know, send your comments in. I mean, it, it, not just ask, but, you know, tribes have, tribal members have questions. And I know they've reached out to a lot of us because, you know, we, we just try to discuss, you know, what's going on and come up with the best possible solution. You know, we're fortunate enough that we haven't had to really utilize legal yet, but it is there, you know, for us should we need that resource. So, that's what I have. Anybody else?
When was that Public Health Service Conference?
It is the 4/1 through 4/30.
And that's in?
That one's in Durant. And there is, just FYI, there is a training that's coming out for the Affordable Care Act and the Indian Healthcare Improvement Act, and that's in June. So, just to put that on your calendars, if you're not familiar with either of those two acts or legislation, the last training that they had was out in the Portland area and this one is actually in Oklahoma. So, this one will be at River Spirit, I believe, June 18th and 19th.
President, I want to make a motion to approve travel.
Got a motion on the floor, is there a second?
I second.
Got a motion and a second? Any other discussion? If not, we'll call for the vote.
Jordan Cano?
Yes.
George Carter, BS, Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hair?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimble?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Item number four, or I'm sorry, item number six, Pawnee Business Council Committee Reports. And we've heard the Tourism Committee meeting. Are you ready, Treasurer Chapman?
Okay.
Committee reports.
On the budget?
No.
I have any?
Yeah, I have a committee report, okay.
My budget is, sorry.
Okay. Any other committee reports? Councilwoman Hair?
Yes, on property. And we met last week, all of our minutes are up to date. And we went over the Rush Roberts force fee patent issue that was referred to us by council. And the committee, you know, was in agreement. The Llewellyn's was with, were with us in the meeting by phone. And the committee agreed with the, you know, the actions of, you know, going forward with them. We are looking at our land boundaries and really starting to look at those seriously, because, you know, we have dealt with encroachment over the years and, and that we know that there's some land boundaries that really need to be defined. And so, we're, we're working on that. We talked to, we had the, one of the BIA people in the meeting with us. And we talked some about the agency. She said the issue with GSA and, and our leases, they have too much space per person. And, and so, that's where Jeremy Lovecamp has, you know, is looking at making the offer of maybe trying to cut down to half of the building and then we get the other, you know, we could use the other half. Because I know that we have concerns about no office space, you know, that we're running out of it. And so, yeah, so, I think that was, is there anything else, Sammy? I think that was about it that we went over. We met for about an hour and a half and it was a productive meeting.
It was a, it was a very good meeting. And it was Erin from the BIA that attended. I can't think of the last name. But it was a good meeting and there, and just to be clear.
Erin, okay.
The Llewellyn's aren't the only tribal members that are being affected by these fee lands. And it's unfortunate that back, several generations back, that our Pawnee people were unable to read and such. And it's, it's very much like, you know, the Osage people and their oil theft. And this was land theft, actually, and they had our tribal members sign off allotments. And... sign off allotments and given to different people by just putting an X on a piece of paper, not knowing what they were signing. It's unfortunate, and I'm very interested in getting into it and finding out what the BIA could help us do and resolve, you know, things done.
Yeah. And, you know, there are hundreds and maybe even thousands of people that this has happened to. And so, it's a big task, but I think it's very important.
And that would go even for our own tribal lands that have been encroached upon.
Yeah.
And we're figuring that out, too. I think Erin's going to be providing us some mapping and such.
Cash, Erin Cash.
Erin Cash. Yeah. I'm sorry, Erin, if you're on.
Okay. Let me, just to expand on a little bit of that, we did, during that meeting, we also did ask Jeremy how many, how many employees that, you know, wouldn't, would, I guess, we need to try to retain office space for. And so, he is supposed to be getting that number and what the actual square footage is, because they have a square footage amount per employee that is required. So, he was supposed to be finding out the square footage. And yes, he did bring that up about potentially utilizing half of the building. There were other topics that we talked about, you know, with regards to like the GSA vehicles providing fencing or security for those, the type of security that would be required for a federal facility, you know, if there was things that we needed to put into place, especially, you know, having still access to that same, that same facility. So, he was going to reach out to, I believe, GSA and find out who the contact is, because the one that's listed on the contract is no longer there. So, he was going to provide us that information, then we would reach out to them to try to find the answers to those types of questions, as it pertains to us. I don't, because I don't know how that, I mean, somehow, somebody still has to pay for a lease. And what is the actual process? It still has to go through GSA per him. So, working with GSA to find out, you know, what we can do, if there, if there is anything we can do on our side to try to make that happen. So, and in doing so, too, possibly finding through that same contact, you know, if we can get an update on what's going on, you know, maybe instead of hearing from BIA, you know, maybe the GSA gets the information quicker than BIA does. Because for the most part, they're learning, Pawnee Agency is learning at the same time as everybody else. So.
Okay. Any other committee reports? No, thank you for that. Councilwoman here, Councilwoman Kimble. Next item is new business. Budget Committee Recommendations. Item A, Approval of 4210, Aid to Tribal Government Budget Modification Number One. Treasurer Chapman?
Yes. All the documents are listed in the packet, and this is the BIA Self-Governance Aid to Tribal Government 2024 Carryover Funds in the amount of $16,250. And what it is for is the funding for the 2025 Election Commission activities will come from this carryover funding. And the backup documents show that the program has $207,981 and adding $16,250 for a total of $224,231. And the justifications are highlighted in the back of the documents here for all of, all of the PBC to see. So, it is for the Election Commission. They have their budget here now, 1006125 program number. And they had $14,450, adding $1,800 for a total of $16,250. And then we have the, listed also the actual contract, aid to tribal government contract. So, it's all in there if anybody has any more questions on that. And if not, I'll make a motion.
Got a motion on the floor by Treasurer Chapman. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Got a second by Councilwoman Kimble. Let's call for the vote.
Jordan Cano?
Yes.
George Carter, BS, Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimble?
Item number B, Approval of 3413, Indian Health Service Tribal Management Grant Budget Modification Number Two.
Yes, President. This is to add money to the program's budget. And attached is the documentation on receiving the additional, the additional amount of $75,000. And their budget was $200,000. Adding the $75,000, it's $275,000. And the IHS Tribal Management Grant Program has the justification here with all the line items documented. And then we have the actual notice of award attached also. So, if there's any questions, if not, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Treasurer Chapman. Second by Vice President Cano. No questions. We'll call for the vote.
Jordan Cano?
Yes.
George Carter, BS, Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimble?
Item number C, Approval of 2149 Community Service Block Grant Budget Modification Number One.
Yes. This is the amount of increased funding of $728, which was submitted by the Community Service Block Grant Program. The funding source is the Department of Health and Human Services Administration for children and families. And it is, we are being asked today to approve the budget modification for an increase of $728 for a total of $1,612. And the, the actual budget is attached, showing the increase of 784 to come out to 1612 as stated. And then is the backup documents, the justification, and the notice of award from DHHS.
I'm sorry, but I think, I'm kind of confused with it, because I think it should be 784.
Oh, you know, you're right. It's kind of a typo. It's a, we call it a?
There's a typo in it.
We call it as backwards.
It's not transposed.
It's not?
No, it's, it's state 728, but it's really 784.
Right. On the, you're right.
So, we need to just, you know?
Yes.
784.
Yes. So.
So, it's 784.
Right. It is 784. So, we can have, Brian have Lisa change that?
You're just changing it in your justification, but yeah, it doesn't change the total amount. It's still the same.
Right. Okay. Yes.
Okay.
We do need to watch that.
I have something to note, too. In the budget that's listed here, if you go to the last item, the indirect cost, it says no indirect cost for indirect cost programs. This actually isn't an indirect cost program, so if that could be taking out, taken out. And this, what the money is for is for direct assistance only, that there's no eligible indirect cost allocations. If you want to note that, or you can just take that, no IDC for IDC programs, because it's not IDC program. It's just direct assistance. I don't, I don't know how, Laura, if you're on, I don't know how thorough you are with the documentation, but.
Right. Laura, our finance director, Laura May, is here. So, Laura, can you see that this gets corrected or noted? Or she was on there? Couldn't hear you. Or I couldn't.
Is there chat in there?
Laura, they're trying to figure out how to get, we couldn't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you now.
There, there you go.
Go ahead. Oh, are you on mute? You're on mute.
Laura, you're on mute if you're trying, if you're talking.
I was, and I was, I didn't know if anyone could hear, hear me either. But what is the question?
Oh, there was just two corrections to the request summary. There's a typo on there. Instead of 728, it should be 724?
724.
Oh, I'm sorry, 784. Looking right at it, too. In the purpose and in justification.
Okay.
You want to change that for your records? And then in the actual budget, I guess that was submitted, in the last item under indirect cost, it states no indirect cost for IDC programs. I don't know if that's just, I'm just, somewhere if we can just note that this is a direct assistance program, that there is no indirect cost eligible activity or something like that.
Yes, we can make those changes.
Okay, yes.
And, yeah, and if you want copies, we can, we can send you copies of the corrections.
I don't need one.
Just to let you know, we did it. Yeah.
Yeah, we just wanted to make note of that. Okay.
Yes, acknowledged. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh-huh. Any other questions?
If no other questions, I'll make a motion.
Got a motion to approve with changes by Treasurer Chapman. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dr. Evans. Let's call for the vote.
Jordan Cano?
Yes.
George Carter, BS, Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimble?
Yes.
Item D, Approval of 2051 Indian Community Development Block Grant, 24 Lagoon Budget.
Yes. This was submitted by Planning, and the amount of the request from HUD, this is, the funding source is HUD, ICD, BG. The amount of the request is $1,349,084. This funding will be used for the Pawnee Nation Wastewater Enhancement Project to expand the current lagoon system and construct and install a water softening system. The PBC approved the submission resolution 2410 on 7 to 24. And attached is the budget created for this. And you can look at that, the documentation, the justifications are also in here with it for this program. So.
Is this just establishing the?
Yes.
New budget?
Yeah.
I didn't see a word document. Okay. Any questions for Treasurer Chapman?
I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor with a second by Vice President Cano. Hearing no questions, we'll call for the vote.
Jordan Cano?
Yes.
George Carter, BS, Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh-huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimble?
Yes.
Item E, Approval of 1875 Four Bands Market Budget.
Yes. This was submitted by our Four Bands Cattle Program, and it is requesting $15,000 to be taken from the cattle operations account at Armstrong Bank to be used as a startup budget for the Four Bands Market and Produce. And they're also asking for approval of the, of the proposed storefront budget. So, this is to, to basically start off the new business, which they are being very innovative with and out of the box. And it's, it's setting up a store now for the, for the beef. And then also, they're going to be selling vegetables from the greenhouse also. So, it is an ag department budget. Everything is in here, the, all the information for starting it off. And so, does anybody have any questions on it, on, on the documentation for this project and for any?
I think I, I think I vetted to this, this body. Is this something that we need to do? Since it's an independent, I mean, they're standalone, right? They're standalone.
I don't think officially standalone, but.
Not officially. Okay, that's, that's what, that's what I needed to hear.
Yeah.
Because my question was, well, why are we doing this?
Yeah. You know, if it's money from, is it, I just have a question, because their ARPA resolution is in here, and it just kind of was like, okay, is this ARPA spending that they're trying to request? But the money that's in Armstrong is revenue, correct?
Revenue.
Okay. I wouldn't think, I wouldn't think they would need to. They would just spend it out of that, out of that account, right?
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
It's good that they want to put a budget together to show what they're spending from there. And, and I like that, but, you know, I don't think that, I don't know. It's up to the treasurer.
Well, you know, that's, that's a really good point in.
Because.
I'm sorry.
You know, just to keep.
Let me turn this off.
Just to keep track of the spending. I think it's, it's a, it's a good thing.
Well, and I guess maybe, too, I didn't think about that, but they probably thought because it's a new business and it was revenue, that it would come out of there. But we can most certainly just to have them take it out of their own budget, their tribal budget, instead of using the revenue. It's just a matter of switching. So, I would recommend that we do that, Laura May, if we could ask the Jimmy to just switch it to the tribal budget, the tribal budget, and leave this in their revenue. And then I am not opposed to, I think it's great that they're starting to address food sovereignty, really, is what we did the ARPA funding for, and we're now got a.
Then it brings up, sorry, I'm going to cut you off. It does bring up the question as whenever they make the revenue from this portion of it, because you want to keep your separate, you know, your separate revenues. So, where, where is this going to go? Is it going to go back into their tribal budget, or are they going to do another account to put it into a separate account for just the business portion of it?
I would, I would, so my set, it would go into their, their business account.
Right.
Because it's part of the generation from the cattle and, and the greenhouses that were vested in. So, I would.
That's what I, I feel like also, as they're building it up.
Yeah.
So, and I would like to say also that I am just really, really proud of, of the progress that, that this one program has made since we started with our ARPA funding, because it has been so successful. And they have just given such a positive image, and their meat is wonderful. And it's just got a lot of positives for us. We've had, been able to, you know, serve our own meat at our own cultural functions. So, I'm, I'm, for Laura May, if Laura May will speak to Mr. Justice and have him just switch, switch that. And then for the profits that come out of the greenhouse, to go ahead and put them in with the other.
Yes, this is Laura May. Can I, do you mind if I just add something else here?
Sure.
Okay. And, well, one of the things is the reason that the resolution is in there is just to remind everyone that the Agriculture Department was set up with the ARPA funding with the original intent, you know, for, to generate revenue as well as economic development. As been stated, yes, the, the agriculture, the cattle operation has been very successful. And yes, this department is doing a lot of innovative activities to expand. They also, I wanted to let everyone know that they have a business license. And one of the things that they are, one of the things that has come up, and Mr. Justice has also spoken with some people from, from OSU, and I'm sorry, I don't remember who the gentleman's name is, but it was suggested that in these. gentleman's name is, but it was suggested that in these, what they've done is they've, they have the ag department, and under the ag department, we have the cattle operations and then the four band, uh, Four Bands market. Okay, so you have to remember that cattle is their capital purchases. So they have to be accounted for separately and separately on the, in the financials. And the auditors look at those separately. And so the market that they're just now getting started, yes, they want to generate some, some additional revenue. The revenue that comes in from either the cattle or the, the separate market will be kept separately based on audits. But in addition, you want to keep those separate anyway, because how are you going to know how your market's doing if it's mixed up with your cattle operation revenue? So the other thing as far as the, what, what they're trying to do here, we did speak with the, our tax consultant, Ms. Michonne Kachay, and with the tax manager, Mr. Fields, and this was discussed extensively, twice. And so everything, I believe Mr. Justice and his crew went through every step to make sure that what they're trying to do here was allowable, you know, according to, you know, the people that I mentioned. And it was. And the, so, so that's basically the reason why they're trying to set this market up, to keep it separate from the cattle for the reasons that I mentioned. Sorry, I don't mean to rattle on, I'm trying to remember everything. But does anyone have any questions for me on that? As far as, you know, using their own, their own budget, I'm sure, you know, that, that they can. This is a self-sustaining department. And so all of the revenue that's in this budget is out of their own account.
Yes, we, we would rather them have the, we would rather them utilize the ARPA appropriation though versus it coming out of their revenue account. That's, that's what we're trying to accomplish right now. My question that you have, I mean, because you've brought up, you've answered the questions that I have about the separation. My final question, is this 1875, is this the program number that's designed specifically for the market then and not the cattle operations?
That is the program number for the market, not the cattle operations.
Okay, that's...
Does it sound, does it sound familiar? Does it sound cultural that it was 1855 intentionally?
I like it.
Any other questions for Laura or for Treasurer Chapman?
Thank you for explaining that.
Okay, now, okay, so you want them to use all of their ARPA allocation and save the revenue? Yes, that, that does make sense. Have, I'm wondering, I haven't made an update on the ARPA balance for that particular resolution. I'll look into that and we'll, we'll see what that balance is, because I think it's getting pretty, I think they're pretty much spending most of that, but I'll update you on that.
Thank you.
Okay, good, thank you.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
So do we table until she, until we figure that out? Or do we approve it, and then that way they can move forward with what they're doing?
I think, go ahead and approve it because she said she's going to, to take care of it.
Yeah, approve, and then in the purpose, that's where you would make the clarification, that it's going to be taken from their...
Yes.
Cattle operation budget.
Yes. I'll make the motion to go ahead and approve it with the appropriation being taken out of their ARPA budget.
I'll second.
Got a motion on the floor by Treasurer Chapman, second by Councilwoman Butler. No further questions, we'll call for the vote. With changes, I should, I should add. Oh, no, sorry, you said it, you stated it in your motion, with the appropriation to come from the cattle operations budget. Okay, let's call for the vote.
George Canuho?
Yes.
George Gardner, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimbrough?
Yes.
Item number two, under new business, we have approval of Resolution 2514, new members'
Do you want her to repeat it? If not, I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Butler. Is there a second? Second by Vice President Canuho. Any questions? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote.
George?
Yes.
George, George Gardner, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimbrough?
Yes.
All right. We would like to welcome Troy Paul Connerly, Everest David Webb, Jax Robert Bobbit, Theodore Orion Henry, and Clarissa Aurelia Upenet, members, new members of the Pawnee Nation. Resolution 2515.
This resolution is to note the date of death of seven of our tribal citizens that has passed away and to remove them from the annuity role.
Motion to approve Resolution 2515.
Second.
Got a motion by Vice President Canuho, second by Dr. Evans. No further questions, we'll call for the vote.
George Canuho?
Yes.
George Gardner, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimbrough?
Yes.
Thank you.
Item number four, approval to amend Resolution 2513, BIA contract number A19AV00114, law enforcement, no cost extension. And this comes back to council. This was presented on March 4th, and we had listed in here that there was an effective date, January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2023. We also had listed the amount, however, we are re, I guess, revising the resolution to omit the amount and the dates so that they can be expended to complete the, the contract objectives of the law enforcement contract. Laura, did you want to expand, or does anybody have any questions?
That's exactly right. Thank you for reviewing this again. Yes, it's just a lot, it's a lot better because it is a contract not to have any date in it because they would hold us, hold us to that. It's also better not to have a balance in there. For one thing, there, this is still an active contract, and they placed some orders for some items, and those items haven't come in. So actually that the amount would be incorrect. And so this is without the date, without the amount, and to expand and to keep the contract open until the funds are expended is the best way to do this contract, and it's very acceptable by Southern Plains as well.
And these were carryover funds, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Make a motion to approve.
If not, I've got a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Butler. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice President Canuho. Let's call for the vote.
George Canuho?
Yes.
George Gardner, yes. Carol Chapman?
Yes.
Cynthia Butler?
Yes.
Donna Hare?
Uh huh.
Jean Evans?
Yes.
Sammy Kimbrough?
Yes.
Item number eight, we have open forum. Does anyone have anything for open forum announcements? I have a couple of things. I had already announced the June healthcare reform in Indian country. It's the upcoming Affordable Care Act, Indian Healthcare Improvement Act, in-person training session, June 18th, 19th, River Spirit Casino in Tulsa. Also, you may have also noticed that an announcement was shared on our Facebook page for the Oklahoma Meat Mastery Training Program that's being held at Oklahoma State University. And the college works pretty closely with the Robert M. Kerr Food and Agricultural Products Center, Product Center, in order to bring this opportunity to, initially it was to Pawnee Nation College, now it's open and it's sponsored by the Otsage Nation. The dates of this will be May 19th through June 20th, 2025. And you can submit your application on the QR code that's listed on the flyer. It's free cost of lodging at the OSU campus, $2,000 stipend after completing the training. And then you get certified, HACCP certification. You have knowledge in sanitation, food defense, and GMP training. So the contact is Robbie, I don't know how you say this, Ha De Ha? And he can be contacted at okahomastate.edu. If you have any questions, reach out to the, to the college, I believe, is the one that's kind of spearheading that, and they can, they can provide you the information. Or if you want to respond to the Pawnee Nation Facebook page, we can also get you the information. On the 27th, there is a Pawnee, Pawnee Chamber meeting at 10:30. What's the 10:30 one?
It is the Pawnee Community Summit.
Pawnee Community Summit at 10:30?
Yes.
And that will be at the...
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce, followed by a Pawnee Community Chamber Roundtable Meeting to be held at 11:30 at the Pawneeville Ranch.
Yes.
If you're interested in participating, those two items are coming up on the 27th to be knowledgeable about what's going on within the city. Also, there is a lunch provided at the roundtable for $10, and you pay that in person at the door. Any other announcements? Yes, Vice President?
Also too, just want to remind our eligible voters, April 5th is the deadline to submit requests for absentee ballot, so just want to put that out there as well.
Thank you for that. Hearing no other announcements, the next item we have is item number nine, set the next meeting date. And I believe that's the first Tuesday.
It's next week, right?
April, yes. So that would be April the 1st unless you want to meet on the 8th. Would you want to have one? Because there are one, two, three, four, five weeks in April. So is everybody good with April the 1st? It'll be next Tuesday. Or would you prefer to go to the 8th? Probably go on the 1st and the 8th.
First one's better for him, because if there's a good reason to do it on 8th, he'll make it happen.
I mean, the 1st is next, that's fine. Anybody have any conflicts with the 1st? No, okay. April the 1st, 2025, at 5:30. Yes, Tuesday, April 1st.
So is it safe to say that the 8th will be a work group?
It'll be one.
A work group?
Yeah, we have the one tomorrow.
Right, Thursday.
Tuesday, Thursday is the joint TDC meeting.
We talked about this.
Just a call.
On the 3rd?
We don't have one this week, right?
Tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Will we do?
Yeah.
Virtual.
Virtual.
Okay, all right, thank you. I'll add that in.
Okay. Item number 10, we have adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion on the floor, a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilwoman Butler. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any not voting or abstaining? We are adjourned. 7:15 PM. All right, thank you.